State is being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Allopinings Act, PDL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. It was properly noted and has been posted and certified by the clerk. I'll role play.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Yes. Please join me with the last.
United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight you have some proclamation, and I'd like to do them first, so you don't hold up the people. So we'll do these, we'll go around with the humidity reports and the administrative report after we've done with the proclamation. So there's some pretty good ones too. I want to start with our four high school students. Uh, if you come up here by me, Katya Daly. Katya, okay? And then Megan Nowinski, did I get that right? Okay. And then we have Natalia Fierina Koma. And then we have Dominic Camiella.
I don't know.
Okay, this is how it's spelled. So before I read these, could you tell us a little bit about your accomplishments that we're acknowledging? It's a big deal.
Not only once.
So what did you do?
So we all auditioned for county honors band, and we all were accepted.
Ah!
That's a big deal. So congratulations. I'm going to read each one of your proclamations separately. Katya, I'll do yours first. Whereas the strength and spirit of a community are reflected in the activities, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens. And whereas Katya Daly is currently in twelfth grade attending a Packon High School and has been accepted to the Sussex County Honors Band. Katya practiced her solo and scales for the flute daily for two weeks prior to the audition. And whereas Katya has a member of the Tri-M Music Honor Society, International Saxton Society, and National Honor Society, she currently has all A with a GPA of four point four four two. Whereas Katya is also involved and part of marching band, academic team, pep band, holiday ensemble, new music ensemble, theater, and middle school drama. Along with being an avid music lover, she's also interested in criminology and criminal psychology. And whereas Katya has proven through her hard work and perseverance that she can accomplish anything she puts her focus into, with great admiration, that I congratulate and recognize Katya Daly's accomplishment. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, do hereby proclaim November ninth as Katya's daily day. Megan? Stand there by us. Whereas the strength and spirit of a community are reflected in the activity, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens. Whereas Megan Nowinski is currently in eleventh grade attending a Packon High School and has been accepted to Sussex County Honors Band, along with coming in second in the county for tenor saxophone. Megan practiced every day leading up to the audition. And whereas Megan is a member of the Tri-M Music Honor Society, National Honor Society, and National Saxton Society, she is in the concert band, jazz band, holiday ensemble, new music ensemble, wind ensemble, pep band, and is section leader in the marching band and has a leadership role with the drama club. And whereas Megan is also president of student council for her grade and continues to work hard in her study, she is a high honor roll student and in the top five of her class. She is currently working towards trying out for the area band and enjoys baking and skiing. And whereas Megan has proven through her hard work and perseverance that she can accomplish anything she puts her focus into, with great admiration, that I congratulate and recognize Megan Nowinski's accomplishments. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, hereby proclaim November eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Megan Nowinski Day. Whereas the strength and spirit of a community are reflected in activities and successes and accomplishments of its citizens. And whereas Natalia Fierina Roman is currently in ninth grade attending a Packon High School and has been accepted to Sussex County Honors Band, along with coming in first in the county for flute. Natalia practiced approximately an hour every day and increased to about three or four hours a day leading up to the audition. And whereas Natalia is a member of the Tri-M Music Honor Society and a member of the All Music Ensemble and Band, she is the secretary of the National Junior Honor Society, co-head of publicity for Packon Grammar Club, future leader of the Packon Marching Chief, and student representative committee to the Board of Education and is president of the freshman class. She currently holds a four point two two five rate point average. And whereas outside of school, Natalia enjoys listening to music and spending time with friends. One of her recent accomplishments also includes having her artwork selected to display at the New Jersey State Teen Arts and hope to send at least one painting this year. And whereas Natalia has proven through her hard work and perseverance that she can accomplish anything that she puts her focus into, with great admiration, that I congratulate and recognize Natalia Fierina Roman's accomplishment. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, proclaim November seventh, two thousand twenty-three as Natalia Fierina Roman Day. Whereas the strength and spirit of a community are reflected in the activities, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens. And whereas Dominic Amelia is currently in tenth grade attending a Packon High School and has been accepted to Sussex County Honors Band, Dominic practiced the audition piece and his trumpet scales every day for three weeks leading up to the audition. And whereas Dominic is a member of the Tri-M Music Honor Society, chapter seven two one two, the International Saxton Society, troop three three nine seven oh, and had a leading role in the last five plays with the drama club. And whereas Dominic is also a section leader and has had a solo in the last two seasons with the marching band. He also plays in the concert band, holiday, and new music ensemble, as well as the jazz band, and has played for the Packon Street Hockey Team for seven years. Through his passion for both sports and jazz, he finds time in his daily schedule to improve musicals. And whereas Dominic has proven through his hard work and perseverance that he accomplishes anything that he puts his focus into, with great admiration, that I congratulate and recognize Dominic Amelia's accomplishment. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, proclaim November sixth, two thousand twenty-three as Dominic Amelia Day. These young people have accomplished just major, major stuff. And, and, uh, and so people talk about our education system, our schools, and, and so they're not so bad now, are they? The product, if you're looking at right here, they are competent, their arts are significant. And, and by the way, you're a very important part of our community. I would have to say, part of the fabric of our community is composed of individuals with great skills, talent, and dedication. So thank you for very much, and you do us proud. Thank you. And now we have Cole Ferrer. Come on, Uncle. Congratulations. This is our Eagle Scout, and this is a proclamation honoring his Eagle Scout project. Whereas the strength and spirit of a community are reflected in the activities, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens. And whereas Cole Ferrer, a member of troop eighty-eight, started in scout at the age of five, earned his highest rank of Eagle Scout by consistently pushing himself to higher level and demonstrating his leadership ability through the accomplishments. And whereas during his scouting history, Cole has completed many hours of community service and earned twenty-six merit badges, which include the required twenty-one merit badges for Eagle Scout rank. And whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Cole undertook a practically sixty-five hour during the past summer to improve the bocce ball courts. This included labor, planning, and paperwork. This project involved replacing half of the wood, making the courts and benches, making new scoreboards, replacing the ball holder, weeding and recompressing the sand in the pits, and received a new set of bocce balls from a donation. While under construction, he was able to accommodate the schedule of the league to work around their needs before utilizing the court. He was able to execute careful planning and teamwork, which allowed him to overcome the obstacles that be faced during the project. Whereas Cole is a senior at Sussex County Technical, majoring in electrical trade, he was an honor roll student and participated in track. On the weekends, when he's not working, he loves to play basketball. And whereas Cole has proven through his hard work and perseverance that he is a skilled leader capable of reaching out to his community in a meaningful way, his project was an act of kindness for people in need that sets him apart from the ordinary and inspires all of us. With great appreciation and admiration, that I congratulate and recognize Cole Ferrer's accomplishment. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, hereby proclaim November tenth, two thousand twenty-three as Cole Ferrer Day. Because the seniors have a bocce ball league up there, a team they play in, they're pretty serious about it. They, they, they love the bocce ball courts. Great job. And again, it, it, stuff like this is important to the community, it is. And, and, uh, and the seniors are much appreciated. They told me to give you a special thank you for them. So thank you for the seniors. Hold your, hold your thing. There you go. Thank you. Thank you again. You too. Now last but not least, is our fire department. Come on, Uncle. Our first responder, very, very important. Whereas the Packon Fire Department, founded in nineteen twenty-three, is a volunteer fire department now consisting of three companies. Northwood Engine Company number two, Defiance Company number three, and Packon Hill Fire Rescue number four. As full threat to our, to our one hundred and twenty firefighter in which the department has fire rescue, fire suppression, vehicle extraction, ice and water rescue, confined space rescue, and fast team capability. The three companies combined have thirteen pieces of firefighting apparatus among them and one command vehicle. And whereas there was once a time that the now defunct company number one, company number one nineteen twenty-three, and company number two, company two nineteen twenty-six, could be seen crossing the River Six Bridge to respond to emergencies in the Packon and neighboring communities. Back when you could hear the wheels going over the wooden boards that made up the bridge as the fire bells were being manually rung on the apparatus. And whereas this is an REO speedwagon, which was handed down to company two by company one, the partner vehicle was an Aeron Spox acquired secondhand. It was repossessed due to the Great Depression and was about to be sent to the fire department out west. Somehow it found its way to Sussex County. The REO speedwagon was given to company number two with the agreement that if it needed a permanent home, the old firehouse picture was originally a garage donated by Charles Thompson, a past company number one member and a founding member of company number two. It was modified under the direction of Edward Sare, another funding member. And whereas, whereas Northwood Fire Company Two came into existence with money raised by the summertime resident of Northwood, second of Packon Borough, then known as Brooklyn Borough, by hosting a vaudeville style show featuring well-known performers of their day, including Abba Costello, as well as Bert Larre, best known as Cowardly Lion and with Nirvana. Whereas this is a typical and great example of different fire departments and firehouses working together to support one another in our county, along with how our fire departments are so integral and tied in with our community. There is just so much history in Sussex County, and it was on display at our one hundred and third Sussex County Fire Department Parade that was held on October seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of Burbank, hereby proclaim November first, two thousand twenty-three as the Packon Fire Department Day. I can't say enough about our first responders. They are critical. And so no one really knows how important they are, please, when you need them, they're there. Our guys are dedicated, they spend hours and hours of training, they're all certified through the Fire Academy. As a matter of fact, I was through the academy also. So I know the hard work that they put in. It's no easy task. They really put you through your, through the hope to do that. So when you look at these guys, you, you have to have that picture in your mind that they worked so hard and trained so hard. It doesn't stop. It's just on and on and on. You know, our, our fire department, our fire marshal service are, are critical to the community. And I applaud their, their efforts and their dedication. You can't be a fireman without being dedicated.
Just to touch off on that, I mean, the reason why we work so hard, I haven't got my haircut yet, so. Next week, I'll probably get a haircut. But just to give you a little example, over a year ago, we embarked on this journey of celebrating a hundred year anniversary of the Packon Fire Department. And thanks to mayor and council for their support, my chairman of the parade committee, Carlos, my fire marshal, and many guys from the fire department, we worked relentless for almost a year. And leading up to the parade day, you know, we were worried about the weather and a lot of people I could thank that helped out, coming out of the community that reached out to me. I mean, it was a great, great event. Everybody from the county loved it. It was, uh, I mean, every time my phone rang and my kids go, it's Carlos again, Carlos again. It was, it was, it was a lot of support from the community. Um, we had some chaos in traffic that day, which we apologized, but the rain held off. And everybody here sits up here for, you know, clerk, administrator, all the council people. They've been nothing but great in supporting, well, communities, people that helped us out that day. And I, I mean, obviously, we couldn't have done without Carlos. He, he kept us on budget, which they liked that. It's a line, so, of course, I mean, he did.
Lunch in a lifetime. But, uh, thank you to the community. You guys absolutely showed a lot of support and understanding in everything we were doing. It culturally for the town, or culturally for the fire department, it's a big deal in Sussex County to host a parade. It's a bigger deal to have the hundredth be in your town the same year. And, uh, it really shone a bright, positive light on our community and our town. Thank you all for your patience.
Now after my next.
Proclamations are important. Maybe some people don't realize it, but it's a recognition of the skills and the dedication and the hard work of the people that we, that we exist for. Thank you all again. All right, humidity reports, done.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that Tuesday, November seventh, that you can send a voting code since we are a voting site. Um, next Wednesday, November eighth, this is the Valor Clinic that I was talking about. We do have a PTSD support group for first responders the second Wednesday of every month from six thirty to eight thirty. Uh, feel free to come out to that, anyone that you know that is a first responder or a veteran suffering with PTSD. There are people there that can meet them right in the ring. Um, on the ninth, November ninth, next Thursday, we have the Center for Prevention. We'll be at the community center from three PM to seven PM. So if you need to get in touch with anyone from the county, touch base with county resources, that would be a good time to do that. On the fourteenth, it's a Tuesday, I believe, um, but just go with the fourteenth. We have our all cancer support group at the community center from seven PM to eight thirty PM. And on eleven twenty, we have meet the mayor or coffee with the mayor at the community center at six thirty. So anyone that wants to have a conversation and questions can feel free to, um, come to the community center and sit and talk with the mayor for a while. And congratulations to everyone tonight that received a proclamation. And that's all I have for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Brad, you up?
Mayor, I too would echo what Don said about the recipients tonight of the proclamations. It just shows you the breadth and width of this community and the, and the good people that are in it. Uh, the other thing I would comment on is, uh, we'd like to thank everyone in the community that came out this last Saturday for inaugural ceremony of the rededication of the park here by Borough Hall. It's, uh, the Opaccon Rotary and Remembrance Park. Uh, the rotary aspect of it is, uh, a place for, uh, our Rotary Club to acknowledge the members that have dedicated themselves. Uh, one member who had fifty-five years in that we dedicated a bench to this Saturday. And then secondly, it's going to be a remembrance park, uh, for all residents of Opaccon should they wish to, uh, remember anyone in their life. Uh, and, uh, the purpose of that is we periodically get a request from someone that would like to permanently acknowledge, uh, someone, usually it's someone that's deceased. Uh, but they want to remember him with a tree, a plant, a plaque, and this now will be a, a, a place that they can do that in. And again, I'd like to thank everyone that helped us get that off the ground. It was a long process, but if you hadn't had a chance to see it, it's right across the Borough parking lot. That's all, Mayor.
And it's pet friendly.
And it's pet friendly. Forgot about that.
Brad, you up?
Okay, I just, I just reiterate also, congratulations to the fire department. Uh, that's a great accomplishment, a hundred years anniversary. And, uh, I know I didn't make the parade, I was sick, but I heard it was a great parade. Um, also to Cole, congratulations on his Eagle Scout. I'll say that it's a real huge accomplishment. Um, it's tough to become an Eagle Scout, and my hat's off to him. Congratulations. Uh, congratulations to the four students from the high school for the band. That is a great accomplishment also. Um, I used to play trumpet years back and, uh, wasn't that good, but, uh, I'll tell you, it was, um, uh, a neat experience and, uh, hopefully you guys can take it farther than I did. Um, and, and speaking about the school, um, well, in a second, I guess. I also just want to mention that, uh, this Tuesday is obviously Election Day. Get out and vote, please. Um, but also there's early voting, and it ends on this Sunday, and you can early vote over at the Lewis Child Branch Library in Opaccon. Um, but back on, on, on the school, um, everyone who's registered got, got one of these. And one of the things that, uh, has happened is that, um, one of the last voting spots for the Opaccon Board of Ed has no petition filed, okay? So please get out and vote for someone for this. The school board needs people, they need good people. And the only way that you're going to be able to vote for someone is with a write-in, so you're going to have to write in. And when you're at the booth, you click on the write-in, uh, little tab, and then type in the person that you want to vote for. And, um, then you have to accept it and then accept your whole voting thing. So it's very important and it's very easy, but don't forget the school board and doing a write-in, okay? That's it. Thank you.
John, you up?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, recreation, um, Saturday, October twenty-second, was, I'm sorry, Sunday, October twenty-second, was Halloween in the park. It was a great event. It was a great day. It was a little chilly and a lot windy. Um, but everyone persevered. There were a lot of people there, a lot of people in costume. It was great because everything was spread out. Uh, the blow-up and, and bounce houses were kind of far away all over the park. And it was kind of funny. People congregated in the beginning on the basketball courts, and then they all went away to the different pieces of apparatus, mostly designed for children. And then once we started the costume contest, they all came back. I kind of feel like Arnold Guthrie up here. But it was a very good event. There were several, um, blow-up bounce houses. There was a, a DJ was there, there was a balloon guy there. It was really a great event. Kudos to the Recreation Commission. It went over very well. Um, also for recreation, basketball signups are underway. They are not online as of yet. So, and, and because of that, they have extended the deadline for registration to November fifteenth. Um, from the Environmental Commission, at the last meeting, we talked several, about several things that are planning for next year. As, as I mentioned before, the townwide cleanup was rained out twice. It's now going to be scheduled sometime in the spring. This Saturday, November fourth, is the Lake Packon Foundation Cleanup because this is the, the fifth year where it's the five-year, five-feet drawdown. The Beautification Committee reported they, they will be doing their finished weeding and other things in the park. They will be doing Christmas decorations very soon. We also talked about the Remembrance slash Rotary Park Dedication. Um, the lobby display, winter theme will be coming very soon. And the fall hike, which was this past Saturday, um, from twelve thirty to two thirty at Cowboy Creek, went very well. It was almost a little too warm to be hiking. Anyway, um, open space, we met last week. We, we again talked about the dedication for Remembrance Rotary Park. As you, if you remember, the open space committee recommended to the council to take fifteen thousand dollars of open space money and put it towards the walkway in the park, which was done. We talked a little bit about Witten Park, which is kind of on hold. We're waiting for the Lake Packon Commission and the state to do their drainage work, which is going to start in two thousand twenty-four. Um, we all had a little conversation about forestry management in the natural area preserve. We're waiting for a, a state, um, organization to get back that is there. Municipal Alliance, we just met the other night. We talked about next year. We're having thoughts about trying to bring back Hidden in Plain Sight, which is a great program. Um, teaches parents, uh, a lot of hiding places that, that younger people use. Uh, there are two resolutions on the agenda regarding, um, Municipal Alliance tonight. Hopefully they'll get favorable, um, they'll be looked at favorably. Also, and this is not directly from Opaccon Municipal Alliance, but at Lenape Valley High School, Monday, November sixth, from six thirty to seven thirty, there's an anti-vaping seminar. The speaker is Timothy Schumacher. He is very good. He titles his seminar, Save Your Breath. It's all about vaping and, and the, the negative aspects of it. Um, I hope that Lenape Valley is not screening people to make sure that only Lenape Valley, um, residents, Lenape Valley Regional High School takes Byram, Stanhope, and Netcon students. Um, and, and they have some out of district students as well. It's a great program. We're going to try and look to see if we can get him here at some point next year. But at any rate, I just threw that out. It's not really from our Opaccon Alliance, um, but we know about it, so I figured I would throw it out. And lastly, not a committee, if you've been following high school football, their last game of the season is tomorrow. It's in Tenafly. Uh, right now, they are four and five. They're going to hopefully finish five hundred at five and five, so that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ryan, you up?
I'm going to start with the proclamations tonight. Everybody here knows my involvement with the music program at Opaccon High School. Um, what you saw up here were the stars of that program. It is a shining star in Sussex County. The Holiday Ensemble alone performed fourteen times last season, and they're probably going to do that again this time this season. They are one of the flags, the banners that our town shows, the county of Sussex. And those four students, Megan, Natalia, Dom, and Katya, are fantastic musicians and really the stars of the program. They are amazingly dedicated, amazingly good with the younger students, and they're not old students. Usually when you see people go and try out for a county band, they're the seniors, the ones that have been doing this a while. We have sophomores up there that made county band because they're that good, and that's why they're here tonight. And I really want to celebrate. The, the program that they built up with that high school is really outstanding. It is really, really, really outstanding. Cole Ferrer is very special in my heart. I've had him as a scout since he was a tiger at the age of five. Um, I've been to Fillmont twice with two different crews. Uh, the second time, they took me, and, uh, they carried me. I was the old guy out of shape. We humped all over the Rockies. It was ridiculous, the amount of hiking that we did. And these kids carried me. There were two leaders in that program, and that was, uh, Christian Hunter, who was Eagle Scout here last year. We gave him a proclamation. Cole was the Wilderness Gia, he was the guide. He was the reason we didn't get lost. He was the reason we were able to get to where we needed to be every night where we had to be. And he is an amazing, amazing man, and I am so proud that he has made Eagle Scout. And, uh, it's really kind of, and those of you who are coaches in this room, you're a coach too. One of the reasons we coach and why we do scouting things is because we watch people become the best that they can be. And it's really fun to watch them do that. I know that's a Ted Lasso kind of thing, but really, that's what we're there for, we're there to help them become the best that they can be. And all of these students and let Eagle Scout that came here tonight all have done that to perfection and should be celebrated. I'm very, very humbled and honored to have watched them on their journey, it was really cool. With that, I'll give it to our committee reports. The next Chamber of Commerce meeting is November tenth. The next Chamber of Commerce B-to-B Breakfast is November fourteenth. Uh, we have a Young Professionals Lunch and Learn November fifteenth. Uh, the, uh, Mayor's Reception and Economic Development Symposium will be November twenty-ninth. Uh, over at the Sussex County Municipal Utilities, the Household Hazardous Waste Event is November fourth, and the next Paper Shredding is November seventeen. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris, you're up.
Uh, I'd also like to say congratulations to all the, um, proclamation recipients. Um, I feel that, um, scouting and music are two of the best things ever. Um, I, I just really think that this is such a positive thing for all communities to promote, um, these accomplishments. There is not enough, there's too much negative, there's not enough positive, and these are wonderful examples of all the positive. I also wanna say thank you to everyone for, um, as Brad mentioned, the, uh, rededication of the park across the parking lot. Uh, the Rotary people were amazing, uh, Bill Weidman, Alan Nelson, and Mike Smith changed out all the wood on the tables there, so we have some beautiful new, um, uh, redone picnic tables for people to use. And there are beautiful cement tables under the gazebo there that actually you could play chess or checkers on, so I hope people get out. The DEP was amazing because they, um, had it all cleaned up, they put in beautiful mums, they did all the setup that day and the garbage pickup and tables and everything, they were just amazing as always. And, um, to all the residents that came that day, it was a gorgeous day, it was a beautiful ceremony. Um, we heard from Rotary about what their goals are and how much they do for the community, all communities. And, um, the mayor spoke and Brad spoke, uh, about the history of the, the, the park, so please go out and enjoy that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Administrator's report, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would congratulate Cole as well, he did such a wonderful job in the bocce ball court that, you know, we'd be interested to see if he would like to, uh, work for us seasonally next year. The superintendent of DPW was very impressed with his, uh, work product and he finished that product. Um, we received certified mailed notice, uh, today, um, uh, from a consultant that works for the Lake Hopacon, uh, Commission. Um, in the notice was a, uh, a notice that the Lake Hopacon Commission and, uh, the state entity that owns the Lake Hopacon State Park have applied, uh, for a freshwater wetlands permit application, um, to be able to revert on the bans and stabilize some of the bans around the land that they own and property. So that is posted on the public bulletin board, and if anyone would like to comment, there is instructions on, on that when they do that. I previously had mentioned, uh, that we had ordered a new AED machine for the Senior Center. That has been received and, uh, DPW will be installing that in the next, uh, few visiting days. Um, while talking about the Senior Center, I also must, uh, mention, as was mentioned about the Community Resource Center, that the nutrition site, uh, will be closed for serving lunch that day, uh, on, on Election Day, Tuesday, uh, November seventh. That's, uh, the, this site has to be, uh, uh, free and clear for the, uh, conduction of the election. Um, on, uh, also Saturday, November eleventh, as we, as we already know, it's November first. Saturday, November eleventh is the annual Veterans Day Ceremony at Veterans Park. Uh, and Nixal will go out with, uh, with specific information about that, uh, sometime next week. Um, on Public Works, uh, our Public Works crew has, uh, been doing leaf, uh, curbside leaf pickup. Um, as we can tell, a few days ago, we had eighty-degree weather, now we're into, uh, real November, uh, weather, so we had a salt delivery. Uh, we are, uh, mounting the salt spreaders on our DPW trucks and doing plow maintenance in anticipation of, uh, of, uh, winter and inclement weather. And I'm pleased to report that, uh, the Mariner Well has, is online and PFAS is at zero detection, uh, which, uh, supports every other, uh, GAC unit that has been brought online. That the PFAS goes to zero detection within three hours of the GAC unit, uh, uh, coming online. And that's what I have to say. Oh, one, one last thing, I'm sorry. I, uh, was handed a, a communication from property owners of Four Brynwood Avenue, uh, that, uh, uh, would like to donate their property to the Borough. Apparently it's, it's wetlands and DEP has extended the wetlands. So I would like to refer this to the Real Estate Committee for review and, uh, uh, detournation recognition. And that's all I have for that.
All right. Now, a public comment, an opportunity given to the public for commentary. Comments are limited to one comment of no more than five minutes. When a person wishes to question the favor of the public comment, the speaker will state their name and speak to the Borough Council directly. The council should be addressed as a collective body and not as individual. Questions from speakers, if any, should be directed to the mayor. Questions will be addressed after the choice, after the close of the public comment period as a discretion of the governing body. I'll entertain a motion that open meeting to the public.
I'll move it, sorry, good.
Um, in favor? I, welcome public.
Rachel Walker, you guys, um, before I ask my question, sorry, David, you say the county lunch program is not taking place because of Election Day?
Yeah, so the, the Senior Center is in polling place, so we can't have the, the, uh, the nutrition site open and have people in there where an election was gonna be.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, because sometimes those meals are the only meals some of those people go. Has anybody considered reaching out to the ambulance squad, since it's no longer polling location because they love serving their community, to see if that could be a possible venue or an alternate, so people don't go to the other stations?
Well, it has to, the, the nutrition program has to be approved by the county and it'd be inspected, I don't think there would be enough time. I know that the, the, um, regular participants that go to the, the Congress meal site are aware and it's on the calendar that it is closed that day, so there'll be ongoing arrangements.
Maybe that's something going forward.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that and if we were to have it, it said that they meet certain conditions, be able to comply and to be inspected, so we'll take a look at that.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, guys, uh, Steve Soldagio. Uh, so last week, there was on social media, there was a post made by the writing candidates, Mike Francis, John Young. Uh, the page formerly known as Republicans for Hopacon Twenty Twenty-Three. The post itself laid in Marie Galilei supporters as bottom feeders. It was directed at residents and people who frequent council meetings to voice their opinions. One of the people in question who evolved to bottom feeder dedicates a lot of his weekends doing cleanups, which he is not obligated to do. He just cares about his town deeply, and for you to call him that, highly low-class and disrespectful. Mike, John, you guys need to apologize to the residents of Hopacon. Mayor Francis, people are tired of realizing empty promises. With your campaign billboard on school property, now this attack on residents, I have zero confidence, you can, zero confidence, you can lead as mayor for any position you hold. Thank you.
Liberty. Rabies vaccine on eleven-eleven? Yes, no, maybe so? Secondly, thanks for the lesson on how to do a write-in. And I'm taking an assumption, all of you registered Republicans will be exercising your right to write-in this election. Thank you. It's eleven-eleven.
I would, uh, Alex McLean, West Shore Avenue, Hopacon, New Jersey. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Um, but I'm only here for one reason, and, um, I wanted to address you specifically, Mr. Young. I think you and I have only had a couple of conversations over many years.
I, I can't hear you speak at all.
I'm Alex McLean.
I know that.
And, uh, I know I'm supposed to address the body in total, but I'm only here for one reason this evening, and that is to address you. And, um, you and I have only had a couple of conversations over many, many years. So we're not friends, right? We don't go to dinner, we don't, and we think we wait at each other's house. But the reason I'm here is I was disturbed at the amount of bullshit that you received on the whatever, you know? And I want you to know that I, as I've lived here for nearly thirty years, have never seen anyone who's done so much for this community than you have. And the negative commentary around that, you do not deserve. And I know this is a watching coming up, and, you know, in the event that you don't retain your seat, I wanted to come out tonight publicly to state that the insults and the ungratefulness demonstrated and spoken of, of your years and years and years dedication to the children. I have seen you from a distance have an amazing impact on countless children, many of whom are now adults and still residents in the state of, of, of Hopacon. And I hope that you retain your seat as thanks for the many, many years of service. You have, I've seen you over and over and over again with a single phone call, get to wherever you need to get to help. And I've seen a lot of people come and go. And they, they'll pitch in for a year, six months, and they're gone. You have been a consistent community servant in this town. And I personally, and on behalf of the many, many, many people that I know here in town, want to thank you. Thank you. And for the, the other, uh, members of the council, in particular, the mayor, I wanna say one thing about, you and I have had our moments, right? You, you and I have had our disagreements, but they've always been respectful. I admire, um, the things that you have done. I particularly admire your tenacity in getting grants for this town borough. And with you've done for the, with the Wellness Center, and in particular, the, um, the recovery, uh, portion of it, um, I think is so just instrumental in such a service. I thank you through time.
Hello, Christopher Benson. I had something prepared here tonight for you guys, but I just decided that I wanted to link it up. I actually wanna thank John Young, Mayor Francis, Brad, and Don for once again, in your post, and I'm bringing up my basic issue, mental health breakdown that I had in two thousand nineteen. As somebody who's struggled with it, I have now built myself so much up that I am excited to say that I actually forgive you guys. That night that you guys decided to try and publicly out my mental breakdown, I had somebody that I would never expect to be on my side after you guys told me what horrible people, including telling me that they were child beaters and they beat their children and all these horrible things. Um, and I wanna thank you because I made a friend for life. I learned something from this experience, not to judge someone by what other people say. Jennifer, who is now running, sat on the phone with me as you guys did your speech and caused these scars on my arm about something that you had, nothing that you even knew about. I tried committing suicide, and you guys could care less about somebody. It seems you don't care about your residents and you don't think before you post. Yes, I was convicted. I have changed my life, I have moved on, and I'm very happy where I am. I have a good family that supports me, I have very good friends that sat there through that time of need. I really do wanna thank you for making me a better person. I now bring my volunteering to different towns. I, every Wednesday at eleven, I'm at the food bank in my current town. And I also do my own garbage cleanup in the middle of the rain, which is posted all over Facebook. But residents will never see that because you use your campaigning page to bash your residents. What's good, though, this time, is I wasn't the only one named. And there were people that had no involvement in this town that you just bashed. I don't know some of the residents that were mentioned in this post, but I do know the people that they were claiming they knew who they were because they switched their name is a art influencer in Arizona. So I appreciate you guys giving me the respect and knowing about mental health as a registered nurse. And I appreciate you making me a better person today, and I forgive you all. Thank you.
Want to plug it?
I guess not.
Thank you.
Bottom here, three one three, Minzur Avenue, Hopacon. I'd like to say that I'm extremely disappointed in the fact that I have never once referred to anyone on this council that wasn't deserving of any name in a derogatory matter. I have challenged your policies, I've challenged your decisions, but I have never once downgraded myself such as you did the way that you did towards residents. Not once. And if you'd like, you're more than welcome to rerun. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves, every single one of you. I do have a question, though. Out of the sitting council members here, individually, I ask that you say whether or not yes, you are for this write-in and you fully support it, or no. And by not answering at all, I'm gonna assume that you do support it.
Oh, I'm gonna direct the council not to answer.
I'm asking them a personal question.
And I'm directing them not to answer.
And that's fine.
Of course you are.
Hi, uh, Jennifer Johnson, no address anymore, right?
Nope.
Uh, I just wanted to say Marie, Rachel, and I came from the Sussex County GOP fundraiser where Jimmy Latell was honored. I'd like to thank Jimmy Latell and the Latell family for their contribution to our state, especially founding Jimmy's House. Uh, it would have been nice to have seen some of Hopacon's elected officials at the, at the, at the event supporting the county GOP. Um, I'd also like to thank you for changing the rolling sign outside the municipal building to say, "We Support Israel." Um, I'd also like to mention that the Women's Club is collecting handmade ornaments for a tree. The Federation is gonna be auctioning off. If you'd like to make some ornaments, uh, Dawn and Christine, please drop them off at the Wellness Center, I know you guys are in the club. Um, I'd also like to know when the last meeting for the Municipal Alliance was and if it was publicized. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna go with script. Because today it was, today it was, it was my turn to be attacked today. Um, and I've been called worse by better. Um, so throw all the insults at me that you want, I can, I can take it, I have a thick skin, I've been working with teenagers for twenty-three years, okay? When you come for my residents is when I have a problem with it. When you call my residents bottom feeders, I think that's disgusting, coming from a council members page, said two sitting council members writing a write-in on their write-in page. That's all, thank you.
Hi, David Harris.
Hi, Doug.
Um, I was just, what, I was curious with the ordinance number twelve. Um, is, uh, normally we, we, um, we have the reading of the ordinance as one meeting, and then we have the final feeling, the following reading, and, uh, we have the, we, we can't ask any questions about the ordinance until the final reading. Uh, it seems this particular ordinance is, is everything is being done in one night.
It's not.
No?
It's just the introduction.
Well, then underneath it says final hearing, both of them.
It's, it's always says final hearing, if there was final hearings, there would be listed the items that would be final hearings.
Yes.
Same every meeting.
It is.
Yes.
Okay, uh, could you elaborate somewhat on the salt? What's, what's planned as far as the salt storage required at Enterprise?
Is it, is it frictional agent?
It, it, it is, but I can be real quick with this, this is, this is not for.
I don't want to get in on the time now, so, uh, for the back and forth, it's, it's five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the other thing is I would like to thank the, uh, I, I would like to thank because I think the council had something to do with the River Stick Bridge being rehabilitated as far as the sidewalks are concerned. So I'm glad that was taken care of. I know the county paid for it, but I, I'm sure you had input into that. Thank you.
I did it. Want to move it?
Wayne Cameron, you need an address?
No, that, 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 uh, also new.
So we've, we've covered the post already. Uh, I'm sure all of you are aware of it. Okay, no answer, been up ten days. Repeated requests to have it open for public comment has been deleted and ignored. So I can only hazard a guess as to the motive behind the posts. Uh, perhaps an attempt to silence critics? I don't know. Hoping maybe one of your supporters, uh, hunts us down? Silences us? So with, uh, the one behind the keyboard, would anybody like to say that I am the bottom feeder?
So the, I'm, just, just, just so we're clear.
Yes.
It's important that the council does not engage in campaign discussions, especially with the election around the corner. Okay? I don't know what members of the public are going to say when they come up, I'm not familiar with the post. So I'm not going to filter what people are going to say from the public. If they touch upon campaign issues, there's nothing we could do to stop that. But this is the business meeting for the council. The council addresses the business of the borough. Campaign issues should be outside of this room and outside of this proceeding.
So my First Amendment right to redress the document for my grievances is not valid?
Nope, it's a hundred percent valid, in fact, I didn't interrupt you, I let you finish, I let the other folks, because I'm not going to interrupt people in their public comment. But the council is not going to respond and they shouldn't.
Why? It's been up for ten days and not one of you have denounced it either. Are you going to tell them not to answer that question?
This is public comment, you can, you can keep commenting.
There's the question.
It's not a public question, it's public comment.
If they want to, they may null address it after the fact, if they.
You can comment on anything you want, no one's going to stop you.
Well, that's my comment, but not one of you have denounced it at all. Is that okay?
I'm not telling you whether it's okay, I'm really interrupting you, you have a First Amendment right.
Useless, useless.
Free to pack on.
Yeah.
You're ready to move.
Free on hack on. Want to move it?
They're going to tell you how to write in on the record.
Very nice.
Move the write back.
Second.
Uh, thank you.
Hi.
Thank you for your comment. John, would you address?
I missed how to do a write-in.
John Young, address Municipal Alliance meetings.
Uh, the Municipal Alliance is a committee, it's not a commission.
Really?
Um, we met last Monday, uh, and because it's a committee, it doesn't, it doesn't. The public is welcome, but the meeting doesn't have to be publicized. Um, you know, we always walk in public and as a matter of fact, we don't get enough public. Um, so if you would like, I will certainly inform you when our next meeting is on there.
John, would you address the salt storage?
Yeah, the salt storage is not government salt storage, it's private salt storage. So that would be things like homeowners associations, et cetera. Um, I'm not, I don't have them, private salt storage in the borough. But it is a mandate from the D E P basically to store more regulations. So it's regulations that can cover any private property owner that has a salt storage facility for, facility for an association.
That helpful?
Yes, thank you.
It's, it's a mandate, right? And it's a mandatory state. Alright, approval of minutes, I'll entertain.
Excuse me, Mayor, um, I have something to say and, um, this is not campaign related at all, but obviously, um, all of us here, including myself, have been accused of some sort of social media post. And I want to clear the record, okay? I don't do social media. I just don't. Mostly for two reasons. Number one, I really don't have the time. Number two, a lot of what I have seen from friends or been told by friends, it's negative. It's people bashing other people. And as Mr. McLean pointed out, I've been a volunteer in this coach for over, for, in this town for over forty years on several different avenues, most of which as a coach. And I would consider myself, if I had to categorize myself as a volunteer, put myself in any one category, it would be a coach. And a true coach. True coaches don't tear people down, they build people up. It's that simple. I just don't do social media, I have no knowledge of whatever posts they're talking about and that's it. I don't do social media and I will not because I don't have time and there's too much negativity involved. I don't need it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, entertain a motion, approval of minutes, approval of the ten eighteen twenty twenty-three minutes. Shall we move?
Second.
Call the rule plate?
Ms. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Here. Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Abstain.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three one sixty-seven bill list.
Uh, does anyone need anything out or?
I do, there's a reimbursement to me. Which is a some bachi equipment at the new bachi ball refurbish courts and, uh, so I would need, uh, number, uh, twenty-three zero one nine one seven.
Okay, uh, Mayor, I will move the bill list not including, um, item twenty-three dash zero one nine one seven.
Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Uh, Mayor, I would like to move, uh, the item twenty-three dash zero one nine one seven of the bill list.
Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Abstain.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
If I could, I just want to explain to the council the, um, the reimbursement, um, this was a, the, uh, for bachi ball racks that were necessary to complete the Eagle Scout project. And the vendor for where the, um, uh, materials were available from would not accept a voucher, a payment, a purchase order from the borough. Uh, Councilman Hoppercamp was kind enough to offer to extend, uh, using his, uh, his funds to purchase the equipment and this is a reimbursement for that. The borough has received all the requisite, uh, documentation, uh, and the, uh, reimbursement is awarded.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, approval of the consent agenda? Hold it. Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, well, resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three one six eight, authorization of a refund and cancellation of future property tax for block one oh four oh nine, lot six. Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one six nine, amending the adopted budget for extra items of revenue Municipal Alliance grant. Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one seventy, amending the adopted budget for extra item of revenue for the D M H A S grant. Second.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one seven one, amending the adopted budget for extra item of revenue Safe and Secure Grant. Second. Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one seventy-three, authorizing an agreement for a grant from the Lake of Hack on Commission. Second.
Second.
Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one seventy-three, amending the adopted budget for extra item of revenue, Lake of Hack on Commission Grant. Shall we move?
Second.
Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance introduction, ordinance twenty-seven twenty-two, privately owned salt storage. An ordinance of the Borough of Hack on, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, creating chapter one eight two regarding privately owned salt storage. Shall we move?
Second.
Call the rule plate?
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Over with it?
You know, Mayor, I'll just bring up one thing real quick, uh, and that is, uh, earlier regarding Kohl's Eagle Pro- uh, Project. The seniors play there, uh, on Thursday nights and there are two bachi ball courts, they're available to everyone. And they're also not only enjoying that, but previous to this, uh, we had, uh, uh, blue line painted on the tennis court there for two pickleball courts. So feel free to go there at any time and enjoy the bachi ball courts or just the pickleball courts there at the seniors.
Do we have to put our own bachi balls or are they there?
They're, um,
Sorry.
You, you need contact with Anna, I can get you her number, just she provides them.
Okay, thank you.
New business? Mayor's comments?
I don't have a lot to say, I think there's enough that's been said. But, uh, as far as PFAS goes, the Mariner well is up and running, that, that's one of our highest producing wells, millions of gallons a day. Uh, we've, I've, I've, uh, arranged for analyzing the output of the water tanks, which is what we're delivering to your faucet. And I'm pretty confident that that's going to be a very good result. That you all might know or might not know, we've taken random samples in town, one at this building kitchen sink and one up near St. Tru's, it was a hole. And we, we do, we do meet the state standard. When you scuttle what you hear about PFAS, we have really been very aggressive with our wells. The, the four highest producing wells are now net zero, that has a big influence. Uh, and we get questions about different areas of the town. And actually on our website is an explanation of, of that, we loop the water, so all the water is pumped to the tanks. And, uh, you could be influenced by a certain well if the tanks dropped to a certain level where we had a pro- a deficit in the water, but for the most part, every day, uh, the water is looped to the tank, the tanks are what deliver it to your faucet. The private wells, uh, if you're on the private well and you fail, on our website is the actual application to the state for a grant that will treat your water. The state will actively pay for a treatment set, there's some hoops you have to run through, of course, but, but it is available and it is on our website. Um, don't forget to meet the mayor on eleven twenty, that's important. Uh, we kind of took a couple of months off in the summer, but now it's back and, uh, to say the least, we've had some interesting meetings. But, uh, but we're there and, uh, and, and we're respectful of people that come, as, as you see tonight, you can say your piece. This is, this is a public meeting. Uh, the response, of course, can, may or may not be there depending on the content, but, but you can say your piece if you address the council. And we honor and respect that. I think there's probably not enough of that to go around these days, to tell you the truth and, you know, Ronald Reagan, one of my heroes, actually, and, and he said that, you know, we should all get along with our, especially with our political difference, that there should be no reason that we should hate each other or go, go trolley motions and accusations, that's not necessary, uh, it doesn't do any good. And it just makes our country, we, our country needs the strength of people respecting their differences, even if they're political. And so I'm known to do that, uh, and I find it, I find it effective when we try to interface at a, as a state or federal level, it, it's helped our town, I'm very aggressive with friends. And some of this being able to work across the aisle, quite frankly, have been very helpful to our town and to all the people in it. So, that, that's all I have to say and I'm sticking to it. Motion to adjourn.
I'm motion.
Second.
In favor of something?
David, it was a flip, yes.
What are you asking?